Apparently we got tricked into something.
All right, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the October 17th, 2022 meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. The time is currently 7:01 PM. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum of council present?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. That brings us to invocation and pledge of allegiance by Michael Stenbridge, followed by Hannah Stenbridge.
Good evening. If you would, please bow your heads and pray with us. Dear Lord, please bless the city of Jersey Village. Please bless and protect our first responders, all of them, our police, our firefighters, our EMT technicians, our chief, our chief rigs and our chief bits, and all the others. Please bless and protect and guide our mayor and our council, council persons, and all our city personnel. Please bless and guide and protect them in their decisions. Please bless and protect all the, all the people, the people of the city of Jersey Village, from bad things like floods or freezes or fires or anything like this, calamities that cause people harm and pain. And please protect our schools. Please protect our, our school district first responders at our schools. And just please help us have progress. God, please help the, the flood district find another contractor to finish and conclude the bayou work for Jersey Village and the other flood projects. And God, we, we are having some havoc at the government level just above the city council, the county level. Please help those county leaders have your guidance and seek your guidance and receive your guidance and work out their conflicts. And we just pray all these things and to keep everyone safe and, and blessed and protect everyone in Jersey Village. In your name, we, we thank you, God. Amen. Okay, would you please follow us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, one indivisible, with authority and justice for all.
Thank you very much. That brings us to a presentation of employee of the month. Austin Bleese, city manager.
Mayor and councilors, I'm excited to announce that Sebastian Marquis is our October 2022 employee of the month. Sebastian joined our team back in July of 2021 as our park supervisor and he's still in that position today. Sebastian is a dedicated team player that is willing to help out no matter the challenge. He assisted with facility repairs, park improvement projects, park renovations, recreation events, pool repairs, community organization events, and many, many more. Sebastian has become a go-to person for nearly every project or idea. He has put in countless hours in making sure events like the Fourth of July Parade and fireworks along with Founder's Day go off without a hitch. Sebastian is always working, is always willing to give each task his all and is determined to utilize his hard work ethic to ensure it's completed both efficiently and effectively. He has completed projects in-house, saving the department money and freeing up resources to be put back into the community. Sebastian has brought a new way of approaching projects and tasks that has revitalized his team. He has contributed to the smooth operation of the pool with preventative maintenance and numerous park improvement projects during his tenure here. The city is certainly a better place because of him. Congratulations, Sebastian. Thank you for everything you do for Jersey Village. So, mayor and councilors, at this point, we'd like to introduce our new firefighters and we'll have Chief Bits do that.
Evening, mayor, council, and citizens of Jersey Village. Tonight, we'd like to introduce you to the new firefighters that started on October 10th and will go on shift October 24th. Firefighter Adolfo Andres Cepeda comes to us from Houston, Texas. Adolfo is a graduate of Houston Community College Fire and EMS academies. Firefighter Joel Beard comes to us from Illinois originally. Joel is a graduate of Western Illinois University with a bachelor's degree in education. He received his fire certification at Kilgore College University. He spent three years with Huntsville Fire Department, where we stole him from, and has relocated to the Katy area. Cade Clark comes to us originally from Baytown, Texas. Cade received his degree from Texas A&amp;M, Kingsville in kinesiology, and then got smart and became firefighter. Cade received his fire certification through Richmond Fire Academy. Cade was with College Station Fire Department for six years and we stole him from there. Clifford Johnson comes to us from, originally from Shutterland area. Clifford is, has his EMS from Wharton County Junior College in Emergency Medicine and his fires through Richmond Fire Academy. Clifford has seven years' experience with the city of Wharton and we stole him from there. Freddie Lopez comes to us originally from Houston area and graduate of Jersey Village High School. Freddie obtained his fire and EMS certifications at Lone Star College Cyfer. He's currently a firefighter volunteer with Cyfer Fire Department. We're glad he's joined their paid ranks. Firefighter Fabian Paso comes to us originally from New Jersey, a former Marine of the United States. Fabian obtained his fire certification through working with the Houston Fire Department and is now with Shell Oil part-time as a firefighter. He has three years of fire service under his belt. Firefighter Martin Perez comes to us from Cypress, Texas, a graduate, graduate of Cyridge High School and then Lone Star College Cyfer Fire and EMS Certification Academies. Firefighter Chauncey Strickling comes to us from Memphis, Tennessee. He obtained his fire and EMS certification while working for Memphis Fire Department for seven years. He has relocated to Houston to be close to the family. Firefighter Simon Wilson comes to us from Willis, Texas and now resides in Houston. Simon is a graduate of Lone Star College Cyfer Fire and EMS Academy. And that's your new firefighters that started this week. I'd also like to announce that this week Captain Kevin Sullivan of Sea Shift was newly promoted captain. He's been in the fire service 13 years and nine years with us. So he's captain paramedic and he will be handling sea shift. So congratulations to Captain.
Well, gentlemen, we are glad to have you here. I have no doubt that the more you know about this community, or for some, already familiar with it, but the more you, you come to know this community, the more you'll fall in love with it and consider it home. So, welcome. Thank you. That brings us to a joint public hearing. A now-called order, this joint public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission at 7:09 PM. Everyone desiring to speak should complete a public hearing comment card and present the card to the city secretary. Each speaker will be given five minutes to present information concerning the proposal to repeal or replace Chapter 14, Building and Development, Article 1 General, Section 14-88 regulations that apply to all districts in order to allow for updates to residential development standards, and the proposal to amend Chapter 14, Building and Development, by amending Section 14-5 definitions to include a definition for home occupation, by adding Section 14-100 Residential Permitted Use Table to Chapter 14, Building and Development, by repealing or replacing Sections 14-101 through 14-104 of the chapter, of Chapter 14, Building and Development, to allow for updates to residential development standards, and by removing Section 104-103.1 in its entirety. Now, I have quite a few comment cards up here, and as best as I can tell from the comment cards, they are all for the regular session. Is there anyone who submitted a comment card that expected to speak specifically on this joint hearing of the Planning and Zoning Commission? Okay, just wanted to be sure before we, we got to the presentation. We're now going to call upon Evan Duvall, the building official representative, to give a presentation concerning the changes that are the subject of the joint public hearings.
And can we lower the screen or get that thing operational? Sweet, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. I just want to mention that my colleague Joe Noonan is also going to be presenting with us. This may not seem like a lot of work, but Planning and Zoning Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission Subcommittee worked since probably early this year to get this done. And this is part of a three-phase. We're looking at commercial now. We're going to start working with our subcommittee and get a similar package for you at a later date with those changes. And then another package later with, so we have, we'll see you twice on this item on the future projects of this. Okay. So here's just the zoning map. This is only focusing on residential districts. We will, again, conquer the commercial later.
To be clear, those are the yellow ones?
It's kind of, over here is residential District A. There's District C is right here. That's kind of a patio home, townhouse district. Essentially, anything that's single-family, townhouse, patio home in the city is under this, this kind of revision. So, we've been working with you guys for a long time. And we, we kind of use our experience of answering questions from residents or contractors to kind of come up with this, this general package with Planning and Zoning Commission, of course, to make it more clear. A lot of times, it's difficult to answer a question without having historic knowledge and kind of interpreting what the past building official did or what was in the past. This is to make it more clear and kind of simplify things and make a few major changes. So, scope of the edits, for this presentation, we're just going to be focusing on residential District A. Just, the other changes will be very similar, but District A is the one that we're, it's most common in the city and the one that kind of is the most looked at in terms of the residents and the most questions we get. So here's the summary of the modifications. The first one we did was making a new residential use table. This is one table where you can look at any district that's residential and see what's permitted, what's not permitted, what's accessory use. And we use a lot of the information in the other, like accessory uses that are in there now and just incorporate in the table. We'll explain more. We have a slide for that. The next thing was, there's a general section that kind of kicks back and right now, the residential, you're looking for setbacks. Look, look at this other section, come back. We're doing away with that. We're trying to get as many of the general comments out of the general section, moving it to whatever district it applies, just so you don't have to look back and forth. We're also including new setback tables for clarification, so that you can easily parse what you're doing in terms of setbacks. The next thing is, Jersey Village has the unique position of being a very confusing for accessory structures. It's parsed out by what kind of structure it is. That denotes how big it can be and how tall it is. We've incorporated some changes that we'll, we'll talk on later about an easier way of doing that that's incorporated with these, these modifications. Number five is accessory quarters, guest quarters. Just adding some language and clarifying that. We have a slide for that as well. Number six, unfortunately, FEMA floodplain maps have not been super kind to Jersey Village. And this is just a way that we looked at, looking at the height of structures based on the new elevation requirements and just being reasonable about it that allows the same height, 35 feet, but kind of clarifying what that means. And the next thing, the last thing, of course, is District C2, townhouse district, is not used. It's not anywhere in the city. It's not on the map. We're just deleting that section just because it doesn't need to be there anymore.
Honorable mayor, members of city council, one of the first things that we considered when we began this initiative to amend the residential districts was use regulations. That was the thing that jumped out at us, jumped out at us immediately as something that could be reconfigured to make it a lot easier to parse for citizens, city staff, builders, et cetera. On this slide, you can see how uses are currently handled in JV. It's a list format. It's not the worst, but I think we could do a little better and we did do that. Moving on to this slide, you can see what we've done for you guys as far as updating the residential use table. Now, it's all in one place, all easy to see in table format. If, say, for example, if you wanted to figure out if home occupations are in allowed use in District A, now all you gotta do, go to column A, go down to home occupations, you see that it's PC, which means permitted with additional conditions. No one applies. Come over here. And these are all the things you have to comply with in order to have a home occupation. So like we said, it's just all in one place, easier to use, easier to parse. We think this is going to do a lot of good for Jersey Village.
And I apologize if I'm interrupting. Up to this point, are we looking at any substantive changes or is this just reorganizing the code?
Up to this point, just a reorganization. Continuing on, this is just another example of how setbacks are currently kind of, it's either in a list format or it's in paragraph format, which is both not the easiest thing. Just if you want to figure out, I have this structure, I want to figure out where it can go on my lot. You don't want to read a paragraph to figure that out. You just want to be able to look, here's the thing, here's where I put it. And so that's just an example of that. And here's our new setback table. So now, rather than a list format, rather than in paragraph format, if you want to know something about a particular structure you want to build on your lot, all in one place. For example, how about an attached garage? Scroll down to here, attached private garage. What's my side setback? Side street, front-loaded or side-loaded? 10, 20? But in this case, it's just a side setback. So here we go, 7.5, and that's reflected on this exhibit. Additionally, any notes that are required, further context that are needed in addition to those just flat-out setbacks, they're marked here, 2, 3, 4. These are the notes that apply to that particular setback. Again, this is just something that we really think is going to make it a lot easier for citizens, city staff, and builders. Just if they want to figure out where something can be located, it's all in one place. And now I'm going to hand it back to Evan to talk a little bit more about areas with increased setbacks in residential District A.
So when we were looking at doing this, this edit, we were looking at the setbacks in certain neighborhoods. And there was a certain case on Jersey Drive that, and as you know, you drive down that street, it's kind of like a grand residential boulevard, has increased setbacks. So we took the painstaking effort of just going through all the plat records and looking at the blocks that have traditionally used the building setbacks on their plats for the front yard setback. That's demonstrated in the legal description on the A, B, and C on the left, which is a lot, but we also have the map that shows the areas where they have respected the building plats for their front yard setback. So that's been included in this edit. Another thing that is unique to Jersey Village, there's certain neighborhoods that can only be one and a half stories. That's currently in there. This is not, not a change at all. We just, I had a legal description, just like we saw before. I parsed out, I figured out which blocks they are. And that comes into play when it comes to the height requirements. So these areas would still be only allowed one and a half stories. It's just that with the floodplain changes, if they are in the floodplain, their height is dependent on finished floor. Now we're in height. So like I said before, one of the biggest impacts of the FEMA floodplain maps is a lot more impacted by where the finished floor has to be, especially if it's damaged over 50%. They have to meet that requirement. So our way of looking at that and fixing that problem is to essentially establish a finished floor that's above whatever the base flood elevation. If it'd be two foot above base flood elevation, that's your finished floor. That's where the height starts. So you can be 35 feet above, two foot above finished floor. And we've used our experience with dealing with FEMA floodplain. And for each of the flood things, we have the maximum height. So no one, they can't build like a one-story underneath parking, which has been done in another community that we were not involved with. But it just works. And I think it's a reasonable thing that if the floodplains change, you have to rebuild your house, you can meet the requirements and still get a normal-sized house. And if you've seen somewhere where they haven't done this and they try to meet the requirement from, you know, average grade, 35 feet, it just starts smashing houses. And that's not great for anybody, in our opinion.
This slide, building area construction, this is no changes are currently being incorporated. This is just as is in the current version of the ordinance. Moving on to parking, the main substance of this change is specifying to RV vehicles and the like is residential District A. We were told that enforcement just needs a little more teeth to how to handle people parking these semis, RV vehicles in residential districts. And to that end, there's a particular sentence in here that says that, except for a single temporary period of time, not exceeding three consecutive days within a single calendar month. And just, with that one change alone, we think it'll do a lot more to allow for enforcement within the city to be able to actually handle these situations where people are parking these larger vehicles in the long term. As this slide shows, this is how accessory structures currently exist within the residential districts. As you can see by datum D and datum E, heights and areas for residential, or for accessory structures rather, in the residential districts are all kind of codified explicitly, rather than kind of having some overarching regulations that we can then apply to any kind of accessory use that's not specifically enumerated. So like, as an example of that, like a typical call that we might get, me and Evan, when we're fielding calls for JV, for Jersey Village, is what if I want to build a, I want to, I have a property and I want to build a shed, a 300 square foot shed. Well, it's kind of, it's a gray area. What do we do in that situation? Is that a utility structure? Is that a hobby structure? And then, well, they don't meet the size requirements. So do we just tell them that he just can't build a shed in his backyard? And to that end, we've done some updates to the accessory structures regulations to make it kind of all-encompassing and take away these areas of gray, just to make it so that now we have tools that we can tell people exactly what they can build in their, in their yards.
So in terms of the, kind of the proposed modifications, and this was a hotly debated topic with the Planning and Zoning Commission and the subcommittee. So we still kept the one-story maximum height for all those, the hobby structure, all the utility stuff. So that's still in there. Maximum height is 15 feet, but can't be taller than the house. So, and these are only one story. You can't do two-story accessory structure besides for a garage, which can be two stories if you have a two-story house. Maximum square footage, we use the garage maximum square foot of any structure, detached garage is 1,000 square feet. We just use that. But we have a catch-all, which means that the total square footage of all freestanding structures is 50% of the main dwelling square footage. So we have like the maximum size, plus also you can't go over 50% of the, the main structure. The maximum lot coverage for the rear yard is 60%. And that's just like flatwork, buildings, just to make sure that the whole backyard doesn't get concreted up. And this is, this is a major change. As you can see from the, the current slide, we just went through to this. The maximum number of accessory structures in the rear yard is four. And then, and that, those are the major changes for that. So again, we're keeping that one-story maximum, can't be taller than a house, and we just allow someone to come in and do a structure as long as it meets certain requirements. The attached garage, like I mentioned before, it's two stories or one story if the house is one story. So it has to be one-story house, one-story garage, two-story house, you can possibly have a two-story garage. The 1,000 square feet, we just kept that the same. And we do have something about, if they're second-floor windows, they have to be opaque. Or like, if they're like detached garage, back of the house, it can be seven foot back, it can be three foot from the side yard. So if you decide to do a two-story garage with a, something above that, and it's facing a neighbor's property, it has to be opaque glass or like frosted glass. We work in West University Place, and that's just something we realized worked really well there. So we incorporated that just because that was a problem there and that was fixed. The next thing is accessory quarters, guest quarters. So some of these exist already in the city. We've looked at this. We had another debate with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And basically, the main, the main rules are you can have a maximum of 600 square feet accessory dwelling. That can include a kitchen. The kitchen was a thing that was debated quite a bit with Planning and Zoning Commission and several meetings with that. And then the only kind of, if you have a garage and you go second story, you can use the same footprint of the garage. That's one of the other things with the accessory dwelling. And again, all the accessory structure requirements would apply unless it's just carrying the footprint for the garage. And then fences and hedges, we just kind of reorganized it in the chapter. That was just somewhere else that people had to look for. The only difference we added was 3D, which just made sure like people are getting really creative with their security, like broken glass on top of fences, other unique barbed wire stuff, just making sure we had a catch-all for that. So that if someone did that and there was a complaint, we could actually take care of it. It's not a huge problem, but we want that in the ordinance to make sure that if it does come up, we can deal with it. And that, that basically includes the major changes and the rest is just more formatting and make it, make it clearer for everybody.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So just one point of clarification. So obviously, at the very beginning of the public hearing, we did have, Madam Secretary, can you confirm? We have a quorum of Planning and Zoning Commission present?
Yes.
Okay, great. Just housekeeping. Wanted to make sure that everyone knew you guys were here. Just housekeeping, wanted to make sure that everyone knew you guys were here.
I was going to correct.
Okay, great. So that is our presentation, and so again, just to reemphasize the point I made before the presentation was made, right now, every comment card I have appears to be clearly for the regular session of, in other words, just general comment, not for this particular subject matter of this public hearing. If there is anyone who was intending to speak, who has submitted a card, intended to speak on this subject matter that we just heard about, speak now? Nope? Okay. All right. There being no one desiring to speak, I now close this joint public hearing on the proposal to repeal or replace Chapter 14, Building and Development, Article 1, General, Section 14-88, Regulations That Apply to All Districts, and the proposal to amend Chapter 14, Building and Development by amending Section 14-5, by adding Section 14-100, by repealing and replacing Sections 14-101 through 14-104, and by removing Section 104-103.1 in its entirety at 7:26 PM. Okay, that brings us to citizen comments. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to the City Council will be heard at this time in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to the city council. The first card I have is from Mike Moriallo.
I'm Mike Moriallo.
Sorry, Mike Moriallo.
I'm Mike Moriallo, live on Hawaii Lane, been here about 15 years. What I want to talk about, and I think that by you making that statement about five minutes kind of segues into exactly what I want to talk about. You have an agenda item that you want to lower that down to three minutes, is that correct?
We have an agenda item for our resolution that has blanks for the current items.
Has blanks on it, okay. Anyway, I think the idea here, if I am not mistaken, is that you want to limit that five-minute talk down to about three minutes of talk. Well, you know what? Because when you come up here to talk to the city council, it's not necessarily going to be anything that is on your agenda. People have their own agendas of things that they want to talk about and maybe get some help from you. Okay? So making that less than five minutes is really going to hurt the individual when he comes up and wants to talk with you about something. He needs to give you a background, and then he needs to give you what his issue is, okay? So I would hope that you will keep the five-minute rule going. However, the other part of what I'm here to talk about is House Bill Number 2840, which was approved on May 3, 2019 by the House, and on May 22, 2019 by the Senate, the state of Texas. And I called the state of Texas this morning to talk to the Assistant AG about this. And primarily what I want to read to you is that, it's a Part B, I have copies if anybody wants to sit it, you know, get it from me when I'm done. "A governmental body shall allow each member of the public who desires to address the body regarding an item on the agenda for an open meeting of the body to address the body regarding the item at the meeting before or during the body's consideration of the item." Which means that, anything that you have, that you're going to talk about, this document tells me, at least it tells me, that when you talk about that, an individual can stand up and ask questions on each and every item. That's what it says right here, okay?
That's why it says "or," before or during.
Before or during, or during. That means while you're talking, if you say something that the people don't understand, they can stand up and they can ask you a question. Well, you know what? We'll have this answered by the AG tomorrow morning, okay? And I'll just go on with what I have to say, because maybe I'm right, okay? Maybe you don't want to do it that way, but the state of Texas does want to do it this way, from what I can see, okay? "You may adopt a reasonable rules regarding the public's right to address the body under this section, including the rules that limit the total amount of time that a member of the public may address the body on a given item." Not just any item, a given item, which means each item, not a whole pile of them, okay? And then the rest of the part here is about, if you can't speak the language, what you have to do. The bottom one here, Section E though, is one of my favorites. "A government body may not prohibit public criticism of the government body, including criticism of any act, omission, policy, procedure, program, or service." I like that one, I'll be using that one later. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next comment card I have is from Eric A. Now. Sorry, we will come back to him, he is...
He said that he would pass on his item since he's in the Planning and Zoning Mission.
Okay, no problem. Next comment card I have is from G. Burner.
First of all, thank you for letting me speak. My subject tonight is on Airbnbs. Airbnbs are popular around the world. Respectfully, they are nothing more than renting a vacation house from a private home or corporation. Advertising and marketing are promoting this concept for today, for today's vacationers all over the world, including Jersey Village. As a retired realtor for more than four decades, I will share, the Jersey Village real estate market has been very good in the last few years. In the future, there may be a downturn in our real estate market. If that happens, that means that investors will come out of the woodwork to purchase homes in our private city. Thus, making a home into an Airbnb might be a good return on their investment. A rather large home next door to me has been redesigned, remodeled, decorated, and furnished into a beautiful Airbnb. This home is advertised to sleep 14 people, it has five or six bedrooms, nine beds, washer and dryer, four full baths, a powder room, and a movie room. This home has beautiful curb appeal, it has outdoor entertainment amenities, including swimming pool, covered patio, seven or eight-foot fence, and a barbecue grill. There is a covered carport with additional parking spaces. With the size and amenities this home has, it is a walking advertisement that says "party house." It is common for loud and rowdy groups of people to party in this home. I feel this home has not been rented to the number of people that show up. I could describe the many things that are going on, but I feel that as adults, we all know what undesirable activities mean. The listing says no parties. It addresses the noise factor, and it says no one can park on the street. The listing states that you can be ticketed if you park on the street. For me personally, I had a situation arise that made me uncomfortable. I have two grandsons that spend a lot, that spend a lot of time in my house. They are ages nine and 10. The oldest grandson has been invited to go for a ride in a purple slingshot by one of the tenants. There are several little children and grandchildren of all ages on our block. Now for the public and the community, fireworks, not firecrackers, were shot on New Year's Eve. I was concerned about it starting a fire on my garage. One time, there were 30 cars leaving the village around 11:30 at night. The cars are parked on Philippine and Ecuador, and who knows what other streets they were parked on that night. It is not unusual for the cars to be parked in the neighborhood's private driveways. Sometimes the cars are parked on both sides of Philippine. I have had cars parked in my circular drive. The large groups cook in their backyard, in the backyard, swim in the pool, play loud music, and use very loud talking voices. Usually, the large groups leave about 11:30 on weekend nights. They usually burn rubber and share their celebratory moods with all the neighbors as they leave. Yes, the cars are loud and we hear them. They come in usually about 2:30, but sometimes it's about 5:30 in the morning. Very often, some of us wake up as they arrive home, back. One Monday morning, I was awakened at 5:15 for a loud morning swimming party. That was a Monday morning. I would like to ask the council to address the issue of having Airbnbs in Jersey Village. It is important to get ahead of this curve. Presently, I know of two Airbnbs in the village. Personally, I only have one suggestion or recommendation for Philippine Street, and it's maybe a no parking sign could be placed on the north side of the street. There are six homes there, but only four of those homes face the street. Each of the four homes have some additional parking space. The Philippine Street needs to be kept open so that emergency vehicles can drive on one side of the street. The most important thing I can bring to our attention is to, for the council, is to control it as quickly as possible. Stopping the sale of a home, or the change of an owner turning their home into an Airbnb is really important. I want to help the city, and I want to save you, the council, and the buyers and sellers that get into a discrepancy here lots of heartache and work in the future.
Thank you very much, Judy. Perfect timing, by the way. It's something we will definitely look into, in fact, I think it's on the agenda for tonight, so, thank you. Very timely. Next card I have is from Mark Malloy.
Hi, my name is Mark Malloy, past city council member for the city of Jersey Village, Texas. Citizens' comments for the regularly-held 10/17/2022 city council meeting. Please make my verbal comments and documents given to the city secretary a permanent record of this meeting. I am here tonight to talk to and ask questions of the Jersey Village officials and city manager about the fund balance report dated as of 09/09/2022. The fund that I am talking about is Fund 11, which is the golf course fund. From the information I am seeing, it is showing that the golf course for the 2021/2022 budget year is showing revenues versus expenses, operating loss of $434,950. The question I have is where's the money coming from to offset this operating loss? The reason that I am asking you this question is because the original statement bade by the city of Jersey Village, Texas government's appointed golf course advisory committee stated per Jersey Village government document dated July 29, 1999. The committee feels that it is feasible to acquire the original 18 holes of the Jersey Meadows Golf Course, drawing funds only from revenues from the golf course to pay off the debt. So you said, you heard what I said. Only drawing funds from revenues from the golf course, you know, from the revenues from the golf course to pay off the debt. The city of Jersey Village, Texas government found out in a very short time that the, a short amount of time, once they purchased the golf course, that the golf course revenue was not going to be anywhere close to being able to cover the purchase of the golf course, or even in many months, its monthly operating expenses. The total estimated amount of Jersey Village citizens' taxpayers' money that has been spent on the Jersey Meadows Golf Course as of today is an estimated $18 million. This is not money that has been generated through the Jersey Village government operating the golf course. The $18 million has come from the citizens, taxpayers of Jersey Village, Texas, and other city revenue sources. So basically, if they take and they decide to take and spend the $8.3 million that they've already accumulated, you, the city council, has already accumulated for the new golf course clubhouse and events center, that will be a total of $26 million that you will have put into the golf course that was not brought in from city, from golf course revenue. So that's about all I wanted to say about the golf course. The other thing that I want to say is, I am also here tonight to say that past and present Jersey Village governments, for many years, have allowed the citizens of Jersey Village, Texas to speak for up to five minutes during the citizen comments portion of publicly-held government meetings, and the current Jersey Village government should not be allowed to make the decision because they feel it's their right to reduce the time that the citizens' taxpayers of Jersey Village, Texas are allowed to speak. The time should be left at a minimum of five minutes or more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. The next card I have is from Bruce Bowden.
Bruce Bowden on Luba Street. I've been up here a couple of times, talking to you guys, and I'd like to address the, last time we were up, we had the golf committee chairman here, and he did make a very good comment at the end where he said, "The council needs to make a decision," and I think you should. But, the problem with the golf course is that the foundation is bad. It isn't making money. It's losing money, and they've never addressed it. That's the one thing the committee has never addressed, is how to bring the thing around. As a council and trying to do what's right, and they should be, you know, working together, you need to, before you in fact consider spending more money, you gotta get the golf course, at least give it a chance to make money. I don't want to tell you how to do the business, it's fairly easy, I mean, you either increase revenue or you cut expenses. That's, that's the combination. But unfortunately, the committee, I'm not sure their hearts in increasing the revenue because they play there all the time or something. I don't know. I don't have, I don't have an opinion on it. I don't play at Jersey Meadows. All right. So my opinion is, before you guys ever vote or bring it up, think about trying to figure out if it's possible to make that thing make money. And maybe you might find out you can, and if you can't, then that's a whole new deal. You need to go into it, and the citizens need to be told what they're going to be buying into. You're already down over 200,000 this, this year, with no hopes of recovering it, so I'm kind of worried about the rest of it. The second thing I want to talk to you about, and I asked you this last time I was up, and this was the tax rate, raising it from 68 to 74, and I asked you, what are you going to do with the money? The tax rate is 74 and a quarter, correct?
Yes, but it's the 68 part that threw me off. I don't think it's been that way for 20 years.
Well, the, the tax rate itself, on, per hundred. But what are you going to do with the increase? Seriously, what are you guys going to do? You guys never answer. It brings in more than your $8 million a year that you said the base one brings out year-on-year or whatever, you're going to do with it. I'd like to know, what are you going to do with the extra money? I can't, you got 18 million in the pot, I don't, I mean, I don't know what to ask, other than, what are you going to do with it? And finally, I want to talk to you about the time in the five minutes. I come from an older era, where we allowed, when I was on council, we allowed everybody to talk, and it didn't make a difference when they wanted to. If they raised their hands, we called them. Okay, Steve changed it, but prior to Steve, it was basically, anyone raised their hand, we talked to them. We'd let them interrupt if they had a reason. It was very good, the people felt it. They really did feel that they were part of the system. And I don't think that it's prudent on you to arbitrarily say, okay, five minutes is the max, great, three minutes is now the new one, no, no, no. I don't know, how many people are speaking tonight? Are we talking 5, 10? Max?
Somewhere around 10.
About 10? So five minutes, 50 minutes? All right? Set your thing at three, at 60 minutes. An hour's worth of listening to the citizens talk isn't bad. If you got more than 12, you ask them, keep it a little short because we're, we're going to try and limit to an hour. I'd like to get home before midnight. Because we didn't, and yeah, we stayed till 10:30, 11 o'clock, until people got sleepy, and they went... and they wanted to go home. But, I don't think you should be up here arbitrarily saying, "Three minutes." Based it on how many, if you've got 30 people wanting to talk at the same one, yeah, say, please keep your comments short, but don't change the time. All you're doing is aggravating the people that do want to talk. And, that's, you know, that's probably the main thing. But my last thing to ask you, I saw that presentation that the, uh, planning and zoning did. Please table anything on that until you give the citizens a chance to see the presentation. I didn't like some of the stuff in there, and I don't have to worry about it because I'm already, you know, grandfathered. But I don't think people that get their house burned down and they have to build it again will like a good portion of that. So table anything, let the citizens take a view at it, and then bring it up.
Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate it. Uh, next card I have is from Jeff Kopeci.
Yes, I'm here to talk, Jeff Kopeci. I live at 16125 Delosier. And I'm here to speak about this five minutes. I've attended more meetings, more council meetings than anybody in the last 30 years, and maybe Richard might have attended more than I have, but I've seen no issues with the five minutes. When we were in the old city hall, which is now the fire department, everybody got to speak and questions were answered. If I asked you a question, you answered me. And then when Ed Heathcock became mayor, when I brought up anything up to the council, he would call me the next day and tell me what he thought about it, what the problem was, and what we could do about it. We have a lot more major issues in this city than to limit people talking to five minutes to three minutes. We've got a serious issue with animal control, and we've got a serious issue with code enforcement. And those issues are what y'all need to be worried about, not about three minutes or five minutes. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'm going to say Ed Heathcock was a really good mayor. I just said, Ed Heathcock was a really good mayor.
Next comment card I have is from Robert Cabala.
Okay, it's Robert Cabala at 16001 Lakeview Drive, that big intersection y'all got. It's pretty. Um, I was surprised that these guys, or the people in front of me, were so eloquent in their, um, discussion of the, um, five minutes, the golf course, this, nobody's really mentioned the clubhouse being up for, uh, to be, make a new one. But, uh, I can't add much more to it, other than I did send an email to all six of y'all. I wish I would have kept on going, but then my wife said, "Go ahead and just show up at the meeting and give them a face." So, that's what I did, and I'm against the new clubhouse. Stop supporting that golf course until it can pay for itself. Um, I like five minutes, but I'm not going to use it all. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Uh, next card I have is from Dawn Eubanks.
Good evening. I'm Dawn Eubanks. I live at 16302 Wall Street, in the great city of Jersey Village, in the great state of Texas. I've lived here for 11 years. I've lived all over the world. I've lived in Houston, and Sugar Land, and Spring Branch, and in Berlin, Germany, and just all over the place. And this is the best place I've lived in in my entire life. When it comes to city services, things happen quick. We had a water break not too long ago. We were without water for two hours, and we had to boil water for a couple of days. But if we lived in the city of Houston, it would have been weeks before it was fixed. Or if we'd lived in Harris County, it may not be fixed yet. If we lived in a third world country, it would never be fixed. We live in Jersey Village. We have a great city services here. People, you know, I've been seeing on Nextdoor, people complaining about the golf course or the clubhouse. Do you realize that that golf course being there increases your home values, sometimes as much as $100,000? Because being in a golf course community makes your property more valuable. We live in, we have the best police and fire department anywhere. Um, I had somebody ask me the other day, "What do you think is the response time for the police and fire department?" And I told him, "In my 11 years, I've had to call the police or the fire department a grand total of three times." And all three times, there was somebody at my house within less than five minutes. Try doing that in the county or in the city of Houston. It's hours before somebody comes. When my mother-in-law was alive, she had the front bedroom of the house, and she told me, "I sit in my bedroom and I watch out the window all day long, and I see a police car at least once every 15 minutes." I think that's amazing. I think we live in the best place, in the best time, in the whole world. And I'm sad to say that I'll be leaving Jersey Village next week, because my life is taking me in a different direction. But my home will always be Jersey Village. I have family here, and I will be here forever, and I support our city council and our city government 100%. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dawn. Next card I have is from Jim Fields.
Hello, my name is Jim Fields. I live 16413 St. Hillier. Thank you for allowing me to contribute to tonight's meeting, city council meeting. This is appreciation. Mayor, I'm just, I can't, I want to tell everybody in this room, anytime I email the mayor, and here he is, working full-time, I don't know if anybody knows that, I think I've got it correct, mayor, you're an attorney in an oil, in an oil and gas sector. He's not at a phone bank waiting for somebody to call. And this goes back to the Taurus III information. He responded, uh, minutes, mayor, and I commend you on that, so that shows that you are sincere about getting to answering the citizens' questions. I also want to thank Councilwoman McCray. I want to thank Council, Councilman Lawson, and I want to thank Councilman Shepherd. All three of you responded. Because I followed the recommendation, I think, of Councilwoman Mitchum said email. Well, I did. And all three of you and the mayor responded, generally concerned to get my answer. And, and the answer was, "What is the height, uh, the foundations from the ground up for the homes to be built in the Taurus III area?" The answer is five to seven feet. However, the concerning problem I have, the liaison council person over the Taurus project, Mr. Singleton, did not respond to the email question, nor have the information at the Taurus III meeting. I don't know if he had an email issue or what. However, this information is very important, as it greatly impacts the cost of building the homes for the developer. Moving on, parks. Coupes again to you, mayor, and city manager, for the playground equipment on the northeast quadrant of the city of Argentinian Wellwood. You have two zip lines over there, and they're absolute blast, and she, my granddaughter wore me out because she didn't want to leave, and I want to thank you for that. Excellent, you have, not only do you have, I was complaining, looking around, going, wait, I tell them, "There are any swings? Look down the road there, and there's the swings for adults, too." Yes, I'm a kid at heart. All right, code enforcement. The junk cars are slowly being removed and repaired. That's not an easy job, mayor. I understand there's some other issues behind the scenes. One of them I did not realize was a disabled vet, and he had some cars there. But we all live in a community, and I see that those cars have been taken care of. However, there is one vehicle that has been on a jackstand for over 10 years. I don't know what, I didn't check, it's not my job to go around and check every time, but this, this is for 10 years. I think that, that's, that's a bad example, and also, if we're going to enforce codes, makes it much more difficult to enforce them if a person's allowed to have it that long. So, all right, recommendations. On the five minutes, uh, and less than, I'd surely like to know why you would want to limit it. I do understand, let's say if there's 100 people here, I don't expect, uh, the mayor and all the city council member, everybody in this room that works for the government to stay here until 2 o'clock in the morning, listen to it, and as you said, be brief, I'll give you one or two minutes. I understand that. But as you know, most of the people come here, it's maybe two or three. This is abnormal tonight to have 10. So, I'm, I'm asking, please, if you can, and city council, please keep the five minutes. Last thing I want to say is overtaxation. This is a big concern of mine. I personally believe this is injustice, overtaxing hard-working citizens to accumulate this much money. That, it's unbelievable. We have fixed incomes, and this money should be returned to the citizens by not collecting home property taxes until the $26 million slush one is depleted. The freedoms and livelihoods of the citizens come first, not the government. And as for large, risky, multimillion projects as Taurus II, Taurus III, City Hall, golf courts, clubhouse, it is best, in my opinion, and I'm sure, and I've done some polls on, on Nextdoor, they want it, too. The citizens want to decide which project should be funded, because they will bear the debt of those decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
So, I'm going to reply with a statement of fact. Mr. Fields attended the Taurus meeting. He asked me a question. I replied and gave him an answer. He asked clarifying question. I replied and gave him an answer. He then emailed council and stated that I did not give him an answer. The mayor replied with the same answer that I gave him, and he was satisfied.
Okay, the final card I have, I'm sorry, sir, your time is up. The final card, the fi, he, sorry, he's simply responding with a statement of fact, but we're going to move on. You've had your time. I'm going to move on to the last card I have. I'm sorry, Jim, i, if you wanted to keep the five minutes, that's not the best way to do it. Let's, 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 we're moving on. Uh, last card I have is from Kimberly Anell.
My name is Kimberly Anell, and I live at 15601 Singapore Lane. As my 14th installment on Jersey Village, 1984 was a busy year of proposed and approved advancements for our safety and enjoyment of living in this growing municipality. Preparations began for a Texas sesquennial celebration. Village Fair Day was planned for the Fourth of July festival by the Recreation Committee. The Beautification Committee had 27 live oak trees still yet to plant from Tree Fest, and was approved to begin planning their locations. The over 65 tax exemption was increased from $25,000 to $50,000. Proposal of a Senate Avenue ingress and egress to 290 was initiated, and to schedule speaking with property owners. Proposals were made for increased timing of the traffic light signal for Senate Avenue at 290, so citizens could easily access 290, and for installation of a no-left-turn 69a.m. sign on the westbound lanes of 290 at Senate. In May, a proposed four-way stop sign at the intersections of Jersey Drive in Rio Grande and at Lakeview was raised, but first needed interpretation from the Texas Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. After researching, Councilman Hobenright in June explained that such criteria for this is very specific, and currently there was not enough traffic flow to warrant the installation of the stop signs, but to have the Director of Public Works research further. In September, Councilman Hobenright advised that there had been five collisions thus far, and to compare, the previous year only had one collision in all of 1983. Temporary stop signs were authorized for the Senate at Lakeview intersection for further traffic study. Council did approve to have crosswalk stripings painted for Jersey at Senate, so children could safely reach the then-called Senate Avenue Park. It was brought up to consider an overpass of 290 at Jersey Drive with no entrance or exit ramps, so that emergency services could have faster access to the eastbound lanes, and also make changes to the Senate Avenue at 290 intersection. A councilman, mayor, and mayor pro tem were authorized to speak with the district engineer for the State Department of Highways and Public Transportation, or then to appear before the Texas Highway Commission. The ambulance committee advised that approximately $22,000 was raised in donations to purchase a new ambulance, and the city would pay the cost difference. Council approved the proclamation of October 7th through 13th as Fire Prevention Week. And with Jerry Easterly of the Volunteer Department inviting citizens to the open house on October 13th. This October 29th, from 10 to 2, will be the open houses for the fire and police. Which is awesome. Police Chief Robert Parsley advised council that the 100 Club presented the police department with six new eight-channel radios. Chief Parsley and Sergeant Morrow spoke about a $37,000 federal grant to hire a crime prevention and juvenile officer. Approval was made for the low bid of $9,729 per unit to Joe Myers for three 1985 LTD Ford sedans for the police department. The Jersey Village Booster Club obtained approval to paint gold falcons on Solomon and Congo Streets. I would love to see these repainted, as the school spirit is very impressive, such as Homecoming Week. Candace Wyman had previously given a presentation after researching the history of Jersey Village. Harold Henry accepted an honorary certificate for her work on behalf of the city. I would love to know if this presentation materials were archived and if they're viewable. The researching and sharing of Jersey Village and the five-minute public comments has been very enjoyable to me, as only having lived here for literally two years. I want to see the falcons continue to fly high, the memory of Jersey cow dairy farming to be obvious, golf course tee times enjoyed, and for all villagers to appreciate where they had the privilege of calling Clark Henry's original 1,236 acres as their home. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kimberly. And I, I may have misspoken when I said the last card. Just want to be sure. Eric, I know you were in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Did you still want to use your time?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Eric Anell, 15601 Singapore Lane. Thank you, mayor and city council members. I hope you are all looking forward to the last three months of the year. They're oftentimes the most hectic, but in a good sort of way, for we at least get three months of festivals, holidays, and seasonal temperature changes. Finally getting a break from the oppressive heat and moving on to fall/winter-like temperatures. Yee-haw. National Night Out. Thank you to the city and to the JVPD for the outstanding work that they did to help us have a great event. With the pre-planning, scheduling, to the great goodie bag, and the visit with the police officers, we, on our first time, had about 25 people show up for our first year. I'm looking forward to the many upcoming activities here in Jersey Village, Fall Frollick being one of the, one, one as the official for October. Kimberly and I really enjoy Halloween, and we are expecting hordes of trick-or-treaters this year, and we enjoy the visual delight of the decorated homes throughout the neighborhood. Agenda item two, short-term rentals. I'm interested in hearing how the city works this one out. I know I certainly don't want a street full of Airbnb rentals in our neighborhood. I understand their draw, but I'm also keenly aware of their downfalls if there is an oversaturation of them in the neighborhood. I would like more oversight by the city on this rather than less. I'd much rather having regulations before problems arise, rather than enacting regulations after problems are happen. Also, regulations can always be amended. Agenda item three, rules for public comment. As someone who is on the permit and zoning committee, and also who comes up for public comment at city council, I can appreciate the allotted time of five minutes that the boards and committees give to the public to make their statements to, to them. There are certainly other methods for the public to reach out to officials of all the boards, but to get up and speak before the officials is truly one of the more direct ways of communication that the public has with the elected officials. I also realize that JV has a generous timeline of five minutes. I know that the city of Houston gives the public three minutes, and Harris County Board of Commissioners only give you one minute. Kimberly, my wife, has been making her way through the minutes of JV City Council's pass, and so- past, and some of the meeting minutes' timestamps go very late into the night. While I'm still considered new to the neighborhood, I am grateful for the meetings currently not going that late on a regular basis. I do hope that you will continue to keep the five-minute limit on citizens' comment and not reduce the time limit. I also do appreciate the fact that you are working to codify these rules and regulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Eric. That brings us to the city manager's report. Austin Bleece.
Mayor and councilors, the report is in front of me. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the city manager from council? Okay. We will move on to the consent agenda. It's a very short one this time. Any council member want to remove that one item from the consent agenda? You sure?
Yeah.
All right, well, then I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda at this time.
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda? All of those against? Any abstentions? The consent agenda passes. That brings us to item H1 on the regular agenda, Consider Resolution Number 2022-61, Designating a City Representative and an Alternate Representative to the Houston-Galveston Area Council's 2023 General Assembly. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Yes, so mayor, last year, the council member Mitchum was designated as representative with council member Drew Rossin as the alternate. This is to appoint members for the 2023 General Assembly, and I'd like to point out that this person would need to attend the dinner that's on Thursday, November 3, from 6:30 to 9:00 at the Embassy Suites in Houston, so.
Okay. Discussion amongst council.
Do you guys enjoy that?
I do enjoy it. I'm happy to do it again, and I am available that day.
Yeah, last year I wasn't able to, and that's while we moved Michelle. I would like to attend. I can, my schedule's clear this time.
I'm happy to withdraw from the alternate position to accommodate anyone else, such as James, who wants to take part.
So, I will make a motion that we appoint Michelle Mitchum as our HCAC representative with James Singleton as the alternate.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item H2, Discuss and Provide Feedback to Staff Regarding Short-Term Rentals in the City. Austin Bleece, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, there's been some discussion about short-term rentals in Jersey Village at the Planning and Zoning Commission. As such, staff has done some research concerning the issue. Currently, we're aware of seven homes in Jersey Village that are actively listed on short-term rental sites like Airbnb, VRBO, et cetera. We've worked with all of those homeowners to ensure that they are paying the appropriate hotel occupancy tax. According to our records, they are all current as well. Of those seven locations, we have had four calls for service to JV PD, with none of those calls being reasonably associated with the short-term rentals. One area of concern that has been raised has been deed restrictions that may exist that may require homes to be used for residential purposes only, and whether or not a short-term rental would meet that requirement. Doing some research, the Texas Supreme Court has issued a case saying that unless the deed restriction is specific as to the length of staying a home, that we couldn't use that venue. In August of 2022, the Fifth Circuit of the U.S. Court of Appeals ruled that a city cannot ban non-resident owners from renting out their homes for short-term rentals, for things like this. Many cities, big and small, around the state and around the country, are dealing with these issues in different ways. Some cities require these places to have city licenses, increased measures of fire safety, and limit the number of people in bedrooms. Guy for being a good neighbor, those types of things. Some other ordinances also have a tier rating system similar to what we currently have with hotels, that revokes the location's license to operate when a high number of calls for service is generated. The exhibits that we've included here show some of the possible ordinances the council could consider. Council is not going to take any action tonight. Right now, staff is just looking for direction from council on how to move forward with this issue.
Okay, that's quite the comprehensive summary. I think it's a good starting point. So, discussion amongst council on the subject matter.
I just, I would like to take a moment to point out that I agree with, Judy Bruner came up and gave comments. What she is saying is 100% accurate. I live around the corner from that current home, and it is 100% used as a party house, and you see people coming and going during the daytime that give you question to what kind of party house it is. I personally like Airbnbs when I travel, but I also know that a lot of the cities that I use them in all have licensing regulations. And I also know that it, I think it's very important that we maintain the integrity of Jersey Village as a residential area, and I personally would be more than happy to back something that makes it very difficult to be an Airbnb host here, or to have those types here. I think it's, that to me is, I think, 100% within our realm.
I agree that I think we should regulate it in some form or fashion. Looking through the examples, I think that it would be smart to have a maximum number of permits issued within the city. I'm not sure where that number should be, but that would keep us from becoming inundated. I do agree that we're a strong candidate for numerous investors to be interested in purchasing and putting one here. I like some of the ideas of maximum occupancy. I'd be really interested to see if there's a way to have a maximum occupancy for the house, not just number of guests, but how many people in the house, because at the county level, I've seen these used to put more than 1,000 people in them. I've been to Airbnbs that have collapsed because there was too many people on the second floor. If there's a way to incorporate founded true noise complaints, so similar to what we do with hotels and motels, calls for service, what I don't want this to become is residents using it every time they see somebody there, they call, and I don't think a false noise complaint should count against them. There was some talk in one of them about if there's no rental activity, then your permit is abandoned. I think it gave nine months of no activity, we just assume it's abandoned, and it put the onus on the permit holder to notify the city that it's been used. Some simple stuff like, we cannot require a homeowner to clearly place the numbers. It's a good idea, everybody should do it, so that fire NMS can find your house, but we can't do that here. I don't think it's an enforceable part of the ordinance, but some of them said no parking on the street. I think that's fantastic. I would love to see that in there. I'm not sure we could enforce it, because you'd have to prove that car was connected with that house, and how you would do that, but, and hotels are required to have fire sprinkler systems, and motels are required to have fire sprinkler system. Really, in Jersey Village, unless you're building a house, anything more than 3,000 square foot should have a fire sprinkler system. If it is legal, if we can find a way to codify it that it has to be sprinkled in order to be used as an Airbnb, I would prefer to do it that way. There is a significantly higher risk for fire and loss in life when you are staying there short-term. You're unfamiliar with the structure, your response time is greater. There are a number of reasons why it is much safer for it to be sprinkled, and if you stay at a hotel in Jersey Village, it's going to be sprinkled, so why would it not apply here?
Have no disagreements. I support every idea you came up with, James. Couple of them, I touched on parking. I don't know how we do with that without no parking signs, but not every street is unique, as unique as Philippine. Then, another idea was, is there a way we can do a minimum amount of days per rental, enforce that, and that would, well, minimum or maximum, right? I mean, we encourage, but something of that sort might be a way to tamp down on that, but I'm, I'd really back the licensing idea of things, and home inspections, et cetera. There was one in here that had number of occupancy is related to number of bedrooms, the number of beds you could put in a bedroom is maximum two per bedroom, et cetera, et cetera, and I think that's, that's a fair amount. I don't know how you police people at a certain time of night, but, yeah. So, I think the minimum amount of days is what I added to the conversation, but.
I'll add my two cents. I also agree with everything you guys are saying. I saw that there was a recommendation for a minimum age of 25. I like that. What really attracted me to the permit component of this is if they had to do a permitting, then they had to have an email and phone number on file of the person who was owning the house that was available for emergencies, because right now, if you have an issue with your neighbor at Airbnb, I mean, you can call 1-800-Airbnb, but you're not going to get anything. Whereas this, you could get at least some direct contact with the person, and hopefully can shut down whatever's going on. But everything else, I agree with. I think all the ideas are very smart.
I definitely agree. It needs to be regulated, and we need to make it as difficult as we possibly can. Whatever we can legally do, we should do it.
So, are we, I'm looking at some of the examples here. Would, would it be purely a permitting system, or would it be a special use permit? I mean, exactly what would be the mechanism from the permitting front?
So, I think that's up in the air. I mean, there's, for every city, there's a different way they do it. Some cities will do the permitting system, and that's where you get, you know, the various type of codes you got here. I will just say that we've, our firms represented a couple cities that have done regulations through zoning. As a function of zoning, it's more defensible, and usually those are through specific use permits, and you'll see that. I mean, right now, these things are getting pulled up all over the place across Texas and across the nation, and all the restrictions you're talking about, some have been used, and some are getting specifically addressed through different cases, and those decisions haven't come down yet, so we can't give a straight answer if, you know, if sprinkling could be required, or parking in front. But as a function of zoning, it's more defensible that way. And so, and then, a specific use permit process would allow for all this type of, you know, specific regulations to a certain, to a certain site, depending on what it was, because you could have that, instead of, you know, making a blanket no parking, you know, rule, there could be one house that could very well be used for Airbnb, but the parking issue maybe is unique to that situation. Specific use permit is a, would be a good way to address that instead of having a blanket prohibition. But again, I mean, that's, that also could be challenged, too. It's, and the two cases that were, that were provided in your, in your update are the two ones now that have changed some of the way that some cities have, have addressed short-term rentals, but, again, the more defensible it seems to be is through your zoning, through specific use permit. I know you're, to mention that to your building official, and he didn't, he didn't like that answer, but that's, I'm just saying, that's, that's what's been more defensible.
Yeah, the main things that I'm concerned about are going to be, number one, it's kind of ironic, because I just came back from Spain, and we stayed in Airbnbs when we were there. Barcelona actually has put a moratorium on any new permits for Airbnbs. They've done it since 2015. Funny thing, as we found out, the Airbnb that we were in had just become an Airbnb within the last year. Fantastic location, but then it became clear why the owner was like, mm, don't make too much noise, try not to draw attention to yourself, because we were staying in an unlicensed Airbnb. Was perfectly safe, but we didn't realize that until we were there. The concern being that I think it would be more difficult in a city like Jersey Village to hide a Airbnb location, but if it becomes, I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that if we lock things down too much, then it could turn into a situation where, it can sometimes be difficult to pinpoint unless you actually rent the Airbnb and then wait to get the address. It could be if they, especially if they're strategic in how they take photos, it could look like any other house. You may just know, well, it's one of these 10 or 20 houses, and then it could be difficult to enforce. So, I don't think we want to over-regulate it to the point where it's driven kind of into the shadows, but I do think that a lot of what was said tonight were some very smart ideas regarding particularly sprinkler system. I think that's, that's extremely defensible if we're requiring it of other commercial facilities that are serving similar purposes. I think that makes sense. I think the main thing we want to keep a focus on is putting regulations in place, obviously, that have a clear connection to safety, not only for the occupants of the house, but also for the community, but that are also easily enforced. The permitting system, I think, is a huge help in that regard, because the owner is going to have a vested interest in ensuring that the occupants are actually following the regulations that are in place, and if it's discovered that they're not, obviously, that permit could potentially be at risk. But I think we do need to make sure that it's, that we're focusing on things that can be relatively easily verified and enforced. I won't repeat what others have said. I think we can do our research, and if need be, talk to other cities, and maybe see what has worked and what hasn't. And on the issue of legality and sort of the moving landscape, obviously, that's something we'll just have to keep an eye on, and if something that we decide to put in place turns out to be bound by a relevant jurisdiction to be not allowed, then we'll, we'll adjust it, as we always have, so.
One thing I was going to add is that, you know, these, even in defensible cities, we have a good, strong zoning ordinance that allow these, you know, within reason. There's still, and I know this, I've seen it on the Airbnb website, but if you're having a problem with, with a house that's, that is listed on Airbnb for sure, they have citizen complaint comments on Airbnb, and they've, and again, I don't know how valid Airbnb is sticking to this, but there was such a backlash in the last few years about these kind of things, party houses being, you know, kind of ruining their name, that they've taken, at least on the front, they've taken a public stance to be against those types of uses, so they have, you know, citizen complaints there, they have internal controls on that, and they will pull you from, from being able to use their site. So, that's still available now, and that will be available even, even with, you know, whatever regulation that you decide to adopt.
I would think that Airbnb may have even more of an impetus to follow through on something like that, because as much as an individual homeowner may, you know, like I said, enforcing issues where there's continual violations that could put their permanent risk, obviously, the main reason we're talking tonight about really clamping down on Airbnbs in our city is because of some of these, these things that are happening, and I would imagine Airbnb as a corporate entity would have a vested interest in trying to clamp down on that so that they don't get, you know, driven out substantially, so.
Can I add one other thing? It's more general to the topic. One, I wanted to applaud staff for going through multiple ordinances. We published three in the packet, but I'm sure they went through several. I like the idea of going with zoning. Example A and C, just to point out, one is Clear Lake Shores, which I'm assuming is close to the water and waterfront, and College Station probably is really busy during the fall, especially on game weekends. So, there's some, not as many parallels with Jersey Village to those cities, so if there's other avenues, other examples that are outside, less touristy, right? I'd recommend looking, love to see some of those, but I think there's bits and pieces from each of those that would probably contribute to a strong ordinance. So, thank you, staff, for, for your hard work on, on putting that together.
The one thing I'm hopeful about is the fact that, I'm sure, I'm sure many people here were just as surprised as I was to hear there are seven Airbnbs in the city. Hopefully, what that means is, really, it's only one or two that are causing a problem, and the rest are, I would imagine, most of the time, if people are staying in Jersey Village in an Airbnb, it's probably just a family looking for a quiet place to stay, not somebody looking to throw a party, although obviously, some places are going to be the exception. Hopefully, we can at least just put in some rules in place that will tamp down some of that less-desirable conduct, and allow the few that are operating reasonably and to, you know, continue.
My apologies. Seven short-term rentals. Airbnb is just one of the companies. They're the largest. By my look, I don't think there's anywhere near seven Airbnbs. There's, we're looking at short-term rentals.
The RBO or, you know, whatever they are.
Safety is very important. We have the friendship, I can do this. The, your comment about, we sit at a safe Airbnb. How well do you do it safe?
That's a good point.
Because, you know, did you test the fire, the smoke detector? Did you know where the fire extinguisher was? I went with a bunch of officers and traveled this year and you had a whole group of officers at a very prominent hotel in a very prominent city in Texas. They had an issue with the fire alarm, woke everybody up at 3:00 in the morning, got everybody outside. Well, the next night, the fire alarm didn't go off and I was, I was really happy. I was like, awesome, I got to sleep all night. But then at breakfast, something that, because of the business I'm in, I noticed, they had turned the fire alarm off. It wasn't that it didn't go off, it was that they unplugged it, shut off the breaker, removed all the batteries, and it was off. That's how many, many fires, people have died and that's how we have fire codes and that still happens today, which is why you need regulation. You know, my next phone call was to a buddy and they got fixed. But as the occupant of the hotel, I had no idea the night before, I figured I was safe. Prominent hotel, national, you know, international chain, you just never know. And that's why these permits are important.
That's a good point. I may have to brush up on my, my Airbnb inspection checklist next time I stay in one. Now, now it's in my head. But it's a good point, very good point. Any further discussion on this? I would imagine staff probably has more input than they can know what to do with.
Yeah, I think we've got, we've got the input. It's going to take some time to, you know, take everything y'all are looking at and look at other options and figure out which way exactly would be the best to go, but we'll keep working on it.
Sounds good. Okay. Unless anyone else has any further comment on council, then we will move on to the next Okay, that brings us to item H3. Consider resolution number 2022-62, setting rules for public comment at city council work sessions, special sessions, and regular sessions. Austin believes city manager.
Mayor, councilor, staff's looked at what other cities around the state do regarding citizen comments at council meetings, including regular, regular meetings, special sessions, and work sessions. It appears that three minutes is the standard for what most cities do, regardless of the type of meeting. There are two in the area that do allow for five minutes of public comment. Some cities require citizen comment cards returned in before the meeting starts and if card's not turned in before the meeting starts, that person's not allowed to speak. Currently, the city has no formally adopted rules of procedure for council comments that we've found on, on the staff level. A resolution with possible rules has been drafted by the council to discuss and modify as, as they see fit, if they want to take any action at all.
I do want to, before I open it up to general discussion, this was something I discussed with Austin about, you know, state law change to where public comments were then required for all public meetings, which was different from at least for the last 10 or so years. I mean, if anyone has more expansive knowledge than that, I would certainly welcome it. But my recollection has been that prior to the change in state law, public comments happened only at regular sessions. For any work session or special session, I don't think there was public comment generally as a practice, but obviously state law changed in that, in that case. The concern became, as, you know, a good example, I think, was our September meeting where because of the various entities we now have between local government corporation, crime control prevention district, fire prevention district, I mean, it's probably as state law gets more and more complex, that could potentially only increase. You could have a situation where you could have three, four, five public meetings and as it stands right now, we're giving five minutes at every one. You could have a person who decides to take full advantage of all of those and decided one evening to speak for 25 minutes if you have five public meetings. That, that's sort of where the impetus for kind of just at least bringing this to council and discussing how they would like to proceed came up. It was not a, a desire to reduce what had traditionally been the, the public comment period, it was that state law had increased that exponentially. And so that, that's sort of the, the background behind what caused us to bring this to council and we wanted to get council input from, on their thoughts on this.
Sorry, my little fuzzy thing fell off, so I'll move back a little. I, I would, you know, consider changing the minutes if there was an issue regarding the, you know, time speaking, but I really don't feel like there's been a problem to solve here. So in my opinion, the five minutes seems to be working. I feel like everybody has enough time to get their thoughts off. The bell rings for maybe half of the speakers, so I, I do feel like that is a good amount of time. I wouldn't be, I know this was thrown around from one city did this, that if it was not on the agenda, it got three minutes and if it was, it got five, but I really don't have a strong feeling towards that. I, I think the five minute is working.
I'll, I'll chime in. I, I think five minutes is fine. I, I will say this, while this is a perfect place for anybody to come and say any comments they want, I also want to encourage people to email or call because council is limited to what they can respond to and what they can say here. And if you email me or you call me, I have much more liberty to respond or try to find information out or try to help you out versus sitting up here. And if it doesn't fall exactly within certain parameters, you know, we're, we're governed by what we are allowed to respond to. So if, you know, it's definitely a lot easier if you email. I really do my best to get back with everybody anyways.
I think five minutes is, is fine, it's adequate. I, I think the, the reference to the stackable meetings that we find ourselves in because it's more convenient for citizens to attend multiple meetings on one night rather than having different board meeting. And certainly it's more convenient for staff that have to stay over or us councilors and the mayor. Those cases, if I was willing to bend from the five minutes, it would be in those cases. I don't know how you'd codify that, where you'd say just on nights where that happens, it's three or something. But nevertheless, I think the, it's more rare that we have speakers speak multiple times in those nights. In five minutes should be enough to make, to get it out. I, I don't think necessarily it's elongation is a, is a problem that, that we need to look to solve, except on long meeting nights and then we just know to batten down the hatches and keep it going. I mean, I've heard from Kimberly or Eric that some, some meetings back in the day went till midnight or beyond. And I think we got a taste of that when we talked about sidewalks, but other than that, we've been done before my bedtime, so I'm okay with that.
Done before your bedtime, it's my bedtime right now. I'm fine with the five minutes.
I, I don't have any problem with five minutes. I appreciated that Eric pointed out, the intent was to codify. That, and that's been the issue and, and I had asked before you even brought it up to the, the city manager, I think I asked a couple of years ago, like, where's the rules? They're, they're not anywhere because it's never been codified. It's always been, well, this is how we did it. Which if you work for me, you know, I'm not a big fan of this, how we've always done it. I don't have a problem with five, I would probably leave it at five. I, I found it interesting, one of the advantages to sitting over here is I get to see the timer and most people would have no problem with three minutes. Matter of fact, people tonight finished in under three minutes without any problem talking about why they need five. That's interesting, but I don't really see a reason to move it down. I'm fine with a five.
You bring up a good point. So Justin, if right now, as it stands, the status quo, I as the presiding officer, I assume if I walk in and I have fif, you know, a stack of 15 cards, can I just say, you know what, folks, tonight, only three minutes per person? And went with that. I guess hypothetically, I legally have the ability to.
Not as it a good idea. He's actually.
I'm not saying it's a good idea. If, if I, if I wanted to ask if it was a good idea, I would ask council or our city manager, but since I'm asking the city attorney, legally it could happen.
So, so your requirement is to allow, you shall allow members of the public to speak. You may adopt reasonable rules. And so, I mean, by allowing people to speak, you've met the minimum standard of the law. And just, and just so you know, I mean, other cities that, like, just like you've presented here, it's all over the place, what people do generally, three minutes at a time. But, you know, if there's, there's a particular issue that the citizens in, in whatever city want to speak about and there's not a public hearing associated with it, nothing stops you as a, as a council from, you know, waiving the rules for an issue, allowing people to speak longer, even for five minutes, you could do that. There's, it's, it's, it's all about that. Or even shrinking those rules down if it's, if you see that there's 100 people signing up for an issue and, you know, you, maybe one of your rules is not that, like, this is a common rule, is that if, if you're going to say something that's already been said, you know, please be cognizant of the time, yield your time, that, I mean, those things you can do. So it's, again, you as a council can, can waive whatever rules you say or adjust those rules per the meeting because the minimum standard is to, you shall allow members of the public to speak.
There was also a common thread, and I've heard this common thread outside of tonight's comments, just to the general public, is I should be able to speak for five minutes and you have to listen to me because you're the elected official, you have to be up there and listen, it doesn't matter how many people want to talk, you have to listen. I appreciate that. I'm not saying, but you have to remember, you also want to respect your neighbors and your neighbors came to this meeting and if you're repeating something that somebody else already said, you're also delaying them from the opportunity to hear what's going on. You're keeping them up from making them late for work tomorrow. So if you're, if you're repeating over and over, it makes sense to come up and say, hi, I'm James Singleton, I live on Delosier. I agree with Mr. Gates, I'm against resolution 123. You have fulfilled your, your moment, you've explained how you stand, you agree with their comments, but it's respectful to your, to your neighbors that are also here in this meeting. I'll sit up here all night long. It doesn't make any difference to me.
I always appreciate when you get up and speak. I know, you know, it takes a lot of, I don't know, guts, but it, it's intimidating sometimes, so I just always appreciate, whether it's something I agree with or not, just getting up there is, is always appreciated.
Justin, real, real quick on, on that. So if we were to set, set this as a, a resolution and, and put a number next to something, does that mean that during another meeting where they're, like, to Bobby's example, we would not be able to, to adjust that resolution?
No, so it's the, it's the governing body that, that does it and so it's whatever the governing body is for that entity that's meeting. So the, like the local government corporation you mentioned, the crime control prevention district, we, and Austin just pointed out, I mean, it applies to other entities too, like your tax increment reinvestment zone boards, those have to follow meetings act. There's some other ones that do that too. Right here, I mean, as the resolution stands right here, what you're doing is applying time limits to city council only meetings. And then you're also requiring public comment request cards to be delivered to the city secretary before, before you're allowing to speak. That's, that's a common, that's a common set of rules. Nothing would stop you from expanding those or for these other entities to adopt different type of rules. But again, again, the, the basic standard is that you have to allow public comment before the item is, or before, during it. Most people, and that's what attorney generals come back and said, when this first was done as a, as a House bill before it got codified, was that, it was questioned about when, when does the public, when does the, the council have to hear? Does it, we have to have every single item, you have to allow public comment and open it up for, for that? Some cities have chosen to go that route. Attorney general has come back and said that as long, the citizen comment portion is a fine, you know, portion of the meeting to handle, handle the rule as long as you make reasonable rules associated with it. And so, again, that's just a long answer, say, yeah, I mean, each body can adopt its own rules as long as you allow the members of the public to speak.
I think your, your point was more to the fact that it's a resolution versus an ordinance? Is that what you were getting at?
Well, what's it going to get that?
I wasn't going to get that technical. I just wanted to know if, if we said five minutes, but a night when 40 people want to talk, could we?
Do we have the flexibility to shorten it?
I mean, so, so the rules that you'll have, again, you can, you can amend those rules as you, as you go.
But I think what the, what the question is, is if they set the resolution tonight at five minutes and next meeting, we have 40 people sign up, the question is, can the mayor say, well, tonight, since we have a large number, can we limit it to three minutes?
So the action will be, the mayor will can ask that question and then the council has to take a vote and action to say, I'll move, somebody says, I move to waive the rules or waive the requirements, whatever, whatever the issue might be. If you want to allow, and again, same thing, if you, if you're going to hold fast to five minutes and then, you know, the buzzer goes off, again, if you want to hear the, continue to hear the comment, you could say, somebody can say, I move to amend the, waive, waive the time requirement, take a little vote on that and as long as it passes, then it goes forward.
So is there really a point to this?
Yes, there is, and what he just mentioned there, because right now, everything is pretty much in the power of the mayor. But if we pass this resolution, then we would have to take an official action and vote in order to change it for a meeting.
So you're telling me right now that if somebody is up here making a comment and they're going over, but if I want to listen to the rest of what they're saying, I have absolutely no power in asking them to continue? It's at them, it's whether or not he feels like it?
That's right. You, you have no, you have no adopted rules.
Yes.
So, so the minimum standard, yeah.
Effectively, yes. Now, the mayors have always been good about, and I've been one of the ones that frequently, well, let me ask a clarify, let me let you talk a little bit more, to the point of flat out telling them, I think you're not done, please talk. But this would provide a little bit more protection on that, maybe.
In case somebody crazy's in charge.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
You said we could vote, so like if somebody was speaking and we did want to hear the rest, we would say, I move to extend, waive the rule. And then council would vote or Bobby would vote?
The council will take an X because this is.
Just, I'm sorry. Well, I was just, it was muddy for me a little bit.
It'd have to take action of the council because you're, this is what you're doing with this resolution is you're adopting the rules. And so you.
It would be a group vote.
Yeah, so if we adopted it, we're allowed to take a group vote. As of right now, if I want to hear it and Bobby says no, what Bobby says goes. I did not mean to rhyme. But yeah, so, okay. I just wanted, thank you for getting the clarification because it was starting to get to the point where I was like, why are we even talking about this? Okay.
So as, reading it now, you have section two of this ordinance says that the citizens are required to sign a public comment request card and deliver that to the city secretary. That might, maybe more than the minutes, that might be something that's triggered beforehand. If you have someone that comes in late and has, is really passionate about an item and they have not turned in a citizen comment card, then that might be something that if someone stands up and says, you know, I forgot, I didn't know I was supposed to do that, can I, can I talk? Again, action of the council, yeah, I'll, I'll move to waive the, the comment card, please approach, whatever, whatever it would be, so.
And in case you're wondering, why are they even having this conversation when it's turning into just a, a technicality? You got to put it on the agenda in order to have the conversation, to know whether people even want to do this. And so sometimes you, you know, this is how the sausage is made, or not. So I think what I'm hearing, at least if, if I'm hearing correctly, the consensus, consensus seems to be that for council meetings, for all council meetings, whether regular, special or work sessions, the council for now wants to keep it at five minutes, but it sounds like everyone is in agreement with formalizing it through the use of the resolution. Is that correct? Of course, keeping in mind that, that we can, and it may even be a good idea as part of the resolution to, or to just simply say, include, amending this resolution to include that council may by a majority vote amend these time limits on a, on a meeting-by-case basis. Or maybe on a meeting-by-meeting basis to make it clear that it has to be uniform.
I move to approve resolution number 2022-62, stating five minutes for work sessions, five minutes for special sessions, and five minutes for regular sessions with the ability to amend as needed.
I'll.
For a motion, it's fine. I don't know if your city manager likes that.
If I can offer a friendly suggestion on the motion, then instead of amend as needed, to say that council may by a majority, well, I can just restate it, you can.
I said the wrong thing, I'm sorry.
That council may by a majority vote on a meeting-by-meeting basis, adjust those time periods.
That.
It'd be meeting-by-meeting because you don't want to just say, oh, this person's coming up, we're shrinking it, this person's coming up, we're enlarging it. The point is to make it uniform. Does that work for you, Michelle, for your motion?
Everybody should be able to speak.
And was there a second already? No. Okay. Is that clear, clear, clear enough for the revising the resolution? I'm going to take that as a yes. We can clean it up later if need be.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution? The resolution passes. That brings us to Item H4, Consider Resolution Number 2022-63, Receiving the Planning and Zoning Commission's Final Report Concerning the Repeal and Replacement of Chapter 14, Building and Development, Article 1 General, Section 14-88, Regulations That Apply to All Districts, in Order to Allow for Updates to Residential Development Standards in accordance with the City's Comprehensive Plan. Rick Faircloth, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. After the public hearing, our P&amp;Z adjourned to a private meeting, and reviewed the information. There was no public comments, and we had a unanimous vote to accept this resolution with no, no negatives.
Okay, Craig. Any discussion from council, keeping in mind this is just receiving the Planning and Zoning Commission's report?
I'll just add, because I feel like elongating the meeting, by the way, that's my word of the day. You know, P&amp;Z, this has been on a public agenda for three or four P&amp;Z meetings, we received the report last September, or the preliminary, we considered an ordinance, receiving the preliminary report, called for the only public hearing, so there's no mystery that this has gone on, to address another public comment. So, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware, these were coming, and we had a public hearing, and no one spoke. So, I have no problem receiving the report and moving forward on these items.
And I just had a quick question for Rick, if that's okay? Rick, did you guys, at any point in time with all of these meetings, have any other citizens show up?
No, we did not.
Okay. Thank you.
But the record reflected, the P&amp;Z chairman said that no one did not show up. So, is that correct, Lori, or do we...
We have someone, we have another committee member.
Yeah, I remember Susan talking about that.
Yeah, I was going to say that there were, there was one or tw, two times when they came, and they did speak about the setback issue on Jersey Drive.
One meeting here, Jersey Drive.
Okay. Thank you, I was just trying to get that.
Any, any further discussion on receiving the report? If not, I would entertain a motion on the resolution at this time.
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-63, Receiving the P&amp;Z Commission Final Report.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes. That brings us to Item H5, Consider Resolution Number 2022-64, Receiving the Planning and Zoning Commission's Final Report Concerning the Amendments to Chapter 14, Building and Development, by amending Section 14-5 Definitions to Include a Definition for Home Occupation, by adding Section 14-100 Residential Permitted Use Table to Chapter 14, Building and Development, by repealing and replacing Section 14-101 through 14-104 of Chapter 14, Building and Development, to allow for updates to residential development standards, by removing Section 104-103 dot 1 in its entirety. Rick Faircloth, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. Again, this particular resolution was discussed in our meeting. We had no comments on it, because it basically was just clarifying some of the definitions, and to make sure that the townhomes was, was removed from this new revised billing ordinance. And it was unanimous, with no, no negatives. Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion amongst council on this report? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2022-64.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes. That brings us to Item H6, Consider Ordinance Number 2022-38, Amending Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jersey Village, Texas, by amending Chapter 14, Building and Development, Article 1 General, by repealing and replacing Section 14-88, Regulations That Apply to All Districts, to Allow for Updates to Residential Development Standards, Providing a Severability Clause, Providing for Repeal, Providing a Penalty as Provided by Section 1-8 of the Code, and Providing an Effective Date. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Yes, so Mayor, the Planning and Zoning Commission has delivered their preliminary report to council. You, the council and the zoning commission have conducted a public hearing, and you've received the final reports, all of the procedural requirements have been met, and now it is time to act upon the ordinance that would implement these recommended changes.
Great, thank you. Discussion amongst council about this ordinance. I will say, we received a lot of, sort of, information in, in this presentation, although this is split up into two different ordinances, you know, if, if there's a need to distinguish between the first versus the second, I think this has kind of all been looked at as one complete project. At least based on what I saw, most of this work has been reorganizing and clarifying the, the existing ordinances, not, not any major changes to the substance. The one major change that I saw, and again, I, whether it's this ordinance or the one following, it looked like one of the major changes was, was to, to reflect the fact that there are going to be some homes that because of the elevation, that there's a need to change some of the language regarding how high a home can be, to, to reflect the fact that if somebody elevates a home five feet, they, you know, you don't wind up with a situation where the existing code, you know, docks them a full story because of that. And I think, other than that, it looked like there was some clarification on setbacks, but I didn't, I, at least based on what I looked at here, and based on what, what was presented in the, in the presentation, it didn't look like there was any major substantive changes to those setbacks.
I will move to...
Hold on, sorry. I, I liked the finished floor concept, because the flood contr, the flood zones seem to ebb and flow. You would think they wouldn't, water's water, but they do, they go up and down, and so it provides a fair playing field, so that we don't smash houses. I, I always like when we are able to develop a rule that can stay consistent.
I think, and something else that, I, I don't know if y'all mentioned it when you first were given the presentation, but to, and I think everyone up here probably is aware of it, but to give everyone else some context, and wondering who are these guys that are presenting all of this information, well, this is the company that does a lot of our building official work, essentially, doing inspections and all of that, and the benefit that we get here is that it's not just experience with our city, it's experience with a lot of different cities in the region, seeing what works and what doesn't work. So, this really, I, I think that the positive part of this is, that's a lot of experience, and a lot of getting an idea as to what works and what doesn't, to try to make this a little bit more friendly for everyone involved, because you're talking about citizens, you're talking about contractors, I mean, there are a lot of people that have to work within these ordinances, and trying to make them a little bit clearer, and, and also making it more consistent with what they may see elsewhere, in terms of format and whatnot, I think is very helpful. I don't know how many of you have reached out to a contractor, and as soon as you said you were in Jersey Village, they said, mm, nope. That may not have everything to do with the way the ordinances are written, but at least if we can renew, remove one more barrier to that, maybe that'll, maybe reduce that situation in the future. Any further discussion or questions on, on this ordinance?
Now, I'm ready for Michelle's motion.
I'll move to approve Ordinance Number 2022-38.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. Which brings us to Item H7, Consider Ordinance Number 2022-39, Amending Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jersey Village, Texas, by amending Chapter 14, Building and Development, by amending Section 14-5 Definitions, to Include a Definition for Home Occupation, adding Section 14-100 Residential Permitted Use Table to Chapter 14, Building and Development, repealing and replacing Sections 14-101 through 14-104 of Chapter 14, Building and Development, to allow for updates to residential development standards, providing that Section 14, 104-103 dot 1 is removed in its entirety, providing a Severability Clause, Providing for Repeal, Providing a Penalty as Provided by Section 1-8 of the Code, and Providing an Effective Date. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Yes, so Mayor, the Planning and Zoning Commission has presented their preliminary report, we've conducted the joint public hearing, and you've received the final report from the Planning and Zoning Commission, making their recommendation. All of the procedural requirements have been met, and it's now time for the council to act upon these recommendations.
Okay. Discussion from council on this ordinance.
I appreciate the table, I think it's easier on the eye, it's a lot easier to digest visually, so, thank you, it was beautiful. I'll move to approve ordinance, I'll move to pass Ordinance Number 2022-39.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the ordinance? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. Which brings us to Mayor and Council comments. I'm going to start down on this end with Mayor Protam Mitchum.
Just want to thank everybody for coming out, and speaking what they want to speak. I always welcome the comments, and I appreciate y'all. Also, vote, voting is coming up soon.
I'd just like to welcome our nine new firefighters. I was honored to be able to attend their penning ceremony tonight, and it's always fun to watch the little ones pin their fathers, and I remember when my son pinned my husband, so it was, it was a neat experience to see that. So, it's a very transformative time for us here in Jersey Village, and for our fire department, and I look forward to the great things that are to come in the future.
Yeah, I agree on the firefighters. Also, we recognize Sebastian tonight, which brings up Parks and Recs, we have the Fall Folic, and the next day, speaking of firefighters, we have the open house. So, once again, more great events going on in Jersey Village, so if one doesn't suit you, the other one might. Plus, there's a movie, I think, on that Saturday night in the park, on the 29th. And, yeah, early voting should start soon, so get, get educated on the candidates, and your district. This is really important for, for a lot of voting, the redistricting occurred, so we're, Jersey Village is now State House 138, and new, new US House District, and we're now in Harris County Precinct 3. We used to be in Precinct 4, so lots of changes going on, so make sure you understand what those are, so.
Councilmember mention, uh, Councilmember Singleton?
Yeah, she's in my fan club, but we don't share her name.
I'm going to blame it on jet lag.
Okay. I've worked nights and weekends and so many odd hours for so many years, that I've been known to drive around JV in the middle of the night, or in the weekends, and I've definitely had JV PD pull up on me as a suspicious vehicle, and walk up to the window and go, ah, it's James again. If Sebastian Markey wasn't in a marked city vehicle, that man would be stopped more than me. I have pulled up on Sebastian at 8:00, 10:00 at night, at a park, making sure that things are set up and ready to go, or that his grass is green enough for somebody to enjoy tomorrow, he doesn't know who, it's a Tuesday, he doesn't know, he's just trying to make sure it's taken care of. He's constantly watching, and I love his passion, I'm really happy he got Employee of the Month, that is fantastic. Drew already mentioned events that are coming up, open house at the fire department, the PD, Fall Folic, and then early voting starts on Monday, and you can vote here in this building, it'll be an early voting location again, so.
I just wanted to say, I mean, everybody's kind of said all the stuff, but I did want to say, I thank you to Police and Fire in the city for National Night Out, and also to the participation with the Homecoming Parade. Of all the years we've been here in Jersey Village, I have never seen a turnout like I have this year, which I think it kind of marks and shows proof of how much JV is growing, and how much, I don't think turnover is the right word, but how much, how many, you know, new families with children, younger children are coming in, I mean, it was, it was really impressive, and so we thoroughly had a great time, so I just wanted to say thank you.
All right. Y'all, hopefully, if you were here when we started the meeting, you got to see the gentlemen all in their brand-new blue uniforms here in the front row, our, our new firefighters. That is, it's very exciting to see, as we were meeting them, I was commenting on how it's great that they all come in together, there's a lot of, you can tell a lot of camaraderie already being developed there, a lot of teamwork that I'm sure will, will come in handy as they grow together and, and learn the community, but that's, it's fantastic to see them all ready to go and eager. I'm sure they're going to make a tremendous contribution to the community. Again, congratulations, Sebastian, I, I, between him and Isaac, it seems like they are everywhere, so they've been getting nothing but tremendous feedback from citizens for all the work that you do, Sebastian, so congratulations, thank you so much for your service to our community. So, with that, we are going to recess the regular session and go into executive session. City council is now going to retire to a closed session at 9:01 PM pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, and Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section 551.071, Consultations with Attorney, in connection with the following items. One, pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section 551.071, Consultations with Attorney, a closed meeting to deliberate the potential and possible purchase, exchange, sale, or value of real property located within TERS 3. Number two, pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section 551.071, Consultations with Attorney, a closed meeting to deliberate information from a business prospect that the city seeks to locate in Jersey Village TERS Number 2, and economic development negotiations, including the possible purchase, exchange, or value of real property related thereto. We will return to open session and continue with the remainder of tonight's agenda after the closed session deliberations are concluded. the closed session deliberations are concluded.
All right, the closed session was adjourned at 10:27 PM and no official action or vote was conducted during the closed session. Which brings us to item M1, Consider Resolution Number 2022-65 authorizing the City Manager to finalize negotiations and enter into purchase agreements and related documents regarding the acquisition of certain real property located within the boundaries of tax increment reinvestment zone number three as recommended by the Board of Directors of the TERZ to implement the project plans of the TERZ. Austin Blythe, City Manager.
Mayor Councilors, this would authorize me to complete the purchases of two more properties in TERZ number three?
Okay, any discussion from council or a motion?
A motion to approve, sorry, Resolution Number 2022-65.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Mitchum, second by Councilmember Shepherd. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. For item M2, we are going to take no action on that item at this time, which brings us to adjournment. So, meeting adjourned. Thanks, folks.